Thank you. You may be seated. We have the agenda before us, and I know a few changes today, so we need a motion in a second to accept.
Motion to approve.
Second. All those in favor, please raise your hand. Motion carries. Thank you. First off, we have public comments section. Has anybody wished to speak? Now's your time if anybody wishes to speak. Hearing none and seeing no action, I'll close the public comments section. Under Section A, we have the consent agenda for Rita Miller, the tax administrator. Does anybody have any questions about the consent agenda as presented? If not, I would need a motion in a second to accept the consent agenda as presented.
Motion to accept the consent agenda as approved, the consent agenda as spoken here.
Second.
We have a motion in a second. Is there any discussion? All those in favor, please raise your hand. Motion carries. Five oh. Thank you. Moving right along to Section B, Presentation to the Board. March 2024 is Social Work Month Resolution, and I'm on the agenda, but I would like for Commissioner Michelle Luthman to read the resolution. She serves on that board and served on it for several years now.
I'd like for all the social workers to come up here, please. I want to speak to you today to share my thoughts on the profession of social work. I can speak from experiences I started my career as a social worker, as well as being the Chair of the Social Services Board of Directors. I look upon this board as being one of the most important that I serve on. I think that Peggy Shoat and Charles Rudy would also agree to this statement. This profession, in my opinion, is one of the most challenging, underrated, taxing, and misunderstood of all professions out there. I go to work daily to bottom line, make money for the company I work for. These folks before you go to work daily to make the lives of the forgotten, abused, neglected, and unfortunate better. All of us have the basic needs of safety, shelter, and sustenance. The people before you today are unsung heroes by assisting less fortunate individuals in our community achieve those basic necessities. Many of us are so blessed to have a roof over our head, food on the table, and the feeling of safety and security. But in Allegheny, many do not have this luxury and live in states of addiction, mental illness, physical illness, and poverty. What do social workers do? Many don't understand all that they do. They are protectors of our most valuable, vulnerable in society, children, elderly, and those with disabilities and illness. They don't give handouts, but rather handups. We are often quick to judge those who are in the system, as well as those who assist them. Social workers in our county do many jobs that most laypersons are not aware of. For example, they assist people in getting heating, having clean water, shelter, and food. They investigate abuse and neglect of children, elderly, and disabled persons. They try to reunite families by helping solve the problems that cause the issue. And when those efforts are exhausted, they train, certify, place, and manage foster care homes. They collect child support. They manage the Medicaid system by enabling citizens to access health care. They oversee elder care facilities. They are guardians over those who are unable to manage their finances. They investigate those trying to defraud the system. They even manage cremations for those who are indigent. It is simple to name off this list, but to put some perspective to it, these folks are sacrificers. They do work lots of hours, weekends nights, and spend countless hours on the road visiting homes and children, who are often in foster care in other states. The month of February, they drove over 7,000 miles in one month. They are the people who show up oftentimes during the worst time of a person's life. They leave the safety of their homes and families to walk into danger in unknown situations to help other human beings, often of which are the most defenseless in society. Without naming any names, I just learned of a situation recently in which a young, single mother was taken to the ER and passed away unexpectedly, leaving three children with no one to turn to. Our on-call social worker showed up to find these children unable to speak the language, alone, grieving, in shock, and scared to death. This worker left her own family to walk into this horrible situation, to take control, provide support, shelter, care, and love, and finally reach a family member several states away to come and get them. This is the reality of social work. You should try going back to your own home after such a situation and trying to go back to sleep. It truly takes a special individual to do this work. I am thankful that we have these heroes among us, and I want to highlight and bring awareness to their sacrifices to make Allegheny a better place to live. You ladies are truly making a difference in our community. I also want to give a special shout out to Stacy Preston. She has been in the position of Director for less than a year as their fearless leader. She has brought many positive changes to this office and strives daily to make Allegheny a better place. I want to say a huge thank you and God bless you to you all, because not everyone has the empathy, skills, brain, and energy to do what you do. I wish to leave you with a couple of these verses from the Bible. Proverbs 31:8 says, "Speak out for those who are vulnerable." Proverbs 14:31 says, "Whoever oppresses the poor shows contempt for their maker; but whoever is kind to the needy honors God." I want to present to you today this resolution proclaiming March of 2024 Social Work Month, whereas social work is a profession truly dedicated to helping people, whereas the primary mission of social work is to enhance human well-being and help meet the basic and complex needs of all people, whereas social workers put a particular focus on helping people who are vulnerable, oppressed, or living in poverty, whereas social workers follow a code of ethics that call on them to fight social injustice and respect the dignity and worth of all people, whereas social workers meet people where they are and help people and communities reach their full potential, whereas social workers work in all facets of our society, including schools, hospital, community organization, the military, mental health centers, social work agencies, corporations, and local and state and federal government, whereas social workers are on the front line in helping this nation solve pressing social problems, including an increased demand for mental health services, an opioid addiction crisis, and economic inequality, whereas social workers are in high demand, with some states reporting shortages in social work staffing and the Bureau of Labor Statistics predicting social work will be one of the fastest-growing professions in our nation during this decade. Whereas the 2024 Social Work Month theme, Empowering Social Workers, embodies the need for society to support social workers so they can continue doing the life-affirming work they do and help address societal needs, whereas social workers in turn empower people, communities, and our nation, helping everyone achieve their full potential. In recognition of the numerous contributions made by Allegheny County DSS social workers, now therefore it be resolved that Allegheny County Commission, we proclaim the month of March 2024 as Social Work Month and call upon the citizens to join the Allegheny County Department of Social Services in celebration and support of the social work profession. Thank you all.
I appreciate the crew and all the work they do every single day.
I think we've got a special.
Yeah, there'll be an official certificate that they'll all sign, and we'll have frame for y'all to have in your office.
Any other comments? I'd just like to echo what Michelle said. It's one of the hardest jobs in the county. We, as commissioners, get to see a lot of things that the general public doesn't understand or they don't know about, some of the things that social service has to go through. And one thing that stuck in my mind the other day during the budget process was how many different states our social services have to go to to check on children. Tennessee, Virginia, South Carolina. And these are mandated by state law that we have to... The social service department has to check on these people. And they're away from home, doing all their duties. And it's hard on them. It's hard on their families. But at the end of the day, they've done a great service. And I think that's what social service is all about, and I thank all of you. Okay, next on the agenda is April Hahn, Finances.
We're back on track with our mid-month finance report. I know we did give a finance report at the last meeting, but we're going to give another one today. Year-to-date revenue, $17,1523.69. Year-to-date expenditures, $13,818,679.56. That represents 69% of our approved budget for expenditures and 85% of our approved budget for revenue. And the approved budget for the current fiscal year is $20,837,888. Bank balance as of this morning, checking, is $9,798,052.24. Savings, $12,866,006.13, for a total of $22,664,058.37. And I will point out, there is a little bit of difference in the savings from two weeks ago till this morning. That is because of the fees that we pay every month, and it's about $1,800 in that public savings account. So I just wanted to point that out. We are receiving between $30,000 and $32,000 in interest off that public savings, also. Any questions about the finance report?
Questions?
Your second page is the local option sales tax. Year-to-date, we have received $823,813.06. Your next page is your comparison to last year. At the same time, was $808,782.40. And then the last page is the quarter cent sales tax that was put in place last fiscal year. We have received $233,184.10. Can I answer any questions?
Any questions, comments? If none, thank you, April.
Thank you.
Moving right along, Item 3, Facilities Update, David Spasher. Thank you, David.
Good morning, Mr. Chairman and Board. Today, as we look at things that's been done, appreciate the opportunity to come and to speak with you. The administration building, we've started planning on a reconfiguration of the upper level, so those are in progress now. We have a preliminary plan, and we're going to make a few changes to that, and then we'll go further as time allows and things needs to be done. We do have a heat and air unit over the tag office that must be replaced. We've got prices on that. And that has been ordered and should be in this week, so we've got that coming. It should arrive. Hopefully, we'll be able to get... The weather will cooperate, and we can get it put in this week, hopefully. On the transfer facility, the RFQ, as you know, went out on tipping floor. That is due back in on Friday at 3:00. So Friday at 3:00, those RFQs is supposed to be back in for the tipping floor. So those things, then, we'll be bringing back to the board as those things to be presented for you. We have repaired the metal on the tipping floor this past weekend. The guys over there came in on Saturday and had to do some welding on that. That was due to an inspection, and that floor was in a little more disrepair than we realized. So they've got that taken care of, and it's fixed back. For now, the Deuceon is up and running. They got it fixed. So it's only got a short period of time to remain, so we're gaining on that as we go. So we do have the RFP, as you know. We sent that out for the wheel loader. That is due back on April the 5th at 3:00. So all those pricing on the wheel loaders is supposed to be back in so that we can get all of that lined up and ready to go. We had... Now, this is, again, all these figures that I have for this. And animal control is two months' worth, since we didn't have a mid-month meeting last month on account of elections. But we had 6.19 tons of co-mingle. We had 28.67 tons of cardboard. We hauled 13 tons of scrap metal, which yielded the county $2797.65. We have new cameras at 90 South Main, so that has one more building upfitted with the new cameras that are a little better, higher quality. We still like the Veterans Park, but we're working towards that. At the firegrounds, we have fixed a few things in the concession stand that the inspector asked for us to fix. So we have fixed those things. There's still going to be some cleaning and some other stuff to go on out there before the inspection that takes place from the Health Department to open that back up this summer. So we're working on turning the water back on, probably at the end of this week or the first of next week. So we'll de-winterize the concession stand and bathrooms at that time. The black building kitchen, according to our contractor, is still on schedule to be completed at the end of this month. That is, if nothing happens or nothing goes wrong. So far, everything has come together just like it should. We have almost everything in place for rough-in inspection. And once the rough-in inspection is done, then it will take off and continue on and be ready to go. So we're still working on a couple of pieces of equipment, which we are going this week to get one of them. So the sink will be here at the end of the week. We also have one other sink that we're in the process of locating now. So other than that, though, we're ready to go on those things. The jail, we have got some pricing on the front. I haven't got all my pricing in yet. So we're working on fixing the front of the sheriff's office. So we'll get those things in and get that taken care of as quickly as possible. On animal control, we had eight assistants in the Sheriff's Department, two dogs and livestock. We had 11 dogs and/or cats picked up. We had 16 that were run at large, 17 attacks, one bite quarantine. We trapped eight dogs, spent 172 hours... Now, this is for two months. We spent 172 hours, ran 72 calls, and drove 962 miles. That is all that I have, and I'll entertain any questions that you might have.
Questions, Sean?
What's the bill on the dogs that are being kept for the court case, please?
$36,000 and change. $36,000 and change.
Thank you. Michelle, any questions? Amy?
No.
Greg?
Mr. Carter? Just one clarification. David mentioned the plans for some reconfiguring of the first floor of this building. And just to, I guess, confirm that, that is an attempt to bring the tax and tag office closer to the main entrance so that citizens do not have to walk all the way down the hallway to gain access to those offices. So that's what is prompting this, is to relocate those offices closer to the front.
Thank you. Thank you, David.
Thank you.
Thank you.
But next would be Item 4, Sick Leave Policy, and that's for Mr. Carter.
Chairman, members of the board, I passed out Page 36 of your personnel policy. And at the bottom of it, there are two paragraphs that are highlighted. And what I would like to do and ask of the board is, if you read the last sentence on the first paragraph highlighted, it says, "Sick leave may also be used for illness in the immediate family not to exceed six days per calendar year." And then the next paragraph identifies what the definition of an immediate family is. As far as I know, there's been some type of cap on this thing, probably since its inception. I don't know any other way to put it. But when you think about it, if you've got children or if you've got someone in that immediate family designation that you have to care for, six days out of a calendar year are not very many days. You can eat that up very quickly. I have no idea why that was put in there. I just don't... I don't come from the, I guess, practice of sick days being calculated separately for yourself or a member of your family. What I am accustomed to is a sick day is a sick day. Now, I'm not getting into the... You know, if you're out three days in a row, you've got to have a doctor's excuse. I still believe that's firm and ready. I just... I would like to, and I know several members of our team here, there's some in the yard and some couldn't be here, but everyone that I have spoken to that works here is in favor of asking the board for a change in this policy, and specifically the six days per calendar year. Now, I don't know if it's... You know, maybe it's been abused in the past. I have no idea. But all I can account for are the people that are here now. I can't account for the ones that's in the past, but the people here now are grown up. They're not going to abuse this time. Seeing what kind of staff you have, we have professionals here that understand what these policies are for and how they're to be implemented and carried out. I personally would like to just see that whole sentence disappear. If you've got a need, in my opinion, if you've got a need to be out with anybody that falls within that immediate family definition, and you still follow the doctor's excuse on three days, and you follow everything else in there, I don't see the harm in that. The difficulties I see for a department head is, are you really going to track six days in a calendar year? And then after those six days, what happens? Well, I'll tell you what happens. You have to then start using your vacation time. You may have 76 days. You may have a child that requires you to be out for two weeks. You can only use six of those days in that 10-day period for the care of that child, meaning you could run out of vacation time and still have 60 days in your sick bank. I don't understand that. To me, a sick day is a sick day. So what I'm asking the board, and if you would like... I mean, to me, it's simple. You put a line through that last paragraph, or that last sentence. But if you'd like for us to rewrite something for you to see it firsthand, we can certainly do that and give it to you at your next meeting. But the census of the staff that's here, I'd like to see that portion of this policy disappear. Certainly, ain't any questions anymore.
Questions, Sean?
I have no questions.
Michelle?
These sick days, are they granted a year?
Per month, a correct April.
That's correct. Twelve?
Twelve days.
And there's no graduation upon tenure? You get no more?
You get no more. That's correct. It's always one per month. And then they roll over at the end of the year.
They do roll over.
They do roll over. And then when all of us get to the time of retirement, that actually turns into service credit, which turns into money. So it's an advantage not to use your sick leave. So you kind of have to... If this policy is changed, an employee is just going to have to weigh out. Do they want to use their sick leave for a sick child, or a sick parent, or a sick spouse? Or do they want to use their vacation leave? But this would give them a choice.
Any questions?
So is there a cap on any sick... Like, when it rolls over every month?
There is not a cap on sick leave. There is a cap on vacation leave, and it's 240 hours. And the excess of that actually rolls over into the sick leave.
It sounds like to me, if you've got sick time and you need to be out with family, you shouldn't be limited to how many days you can use. Yeah, I mean, it makes sense to me, because that six-day cap doesn't make sense at all to me. Because if you've got good reason to be out with a sick family member, and you've got sick time to do that, it should be at your... You know, your...
Greg, any comments?
I have no problem just getting rid of that last sentence.
Chairman, I would suggest that we make a consensus of the board for the rewrite, and that's...
I'm sure it's a consensus of the board to go ahead and further look at making these changes and what we have to do in the policy manual. I think with HR and your guidance, and just... I think Heather needs to be part of the discussion. But is that a consensus of the board to proceed?
Yes.
Yes.
The board is aware. We also have a leave share policy also, which is strictly for sick leave. So changing the current policy, as we've talked about, allows the employee to use more of their sick leave. And I understand what April's saying about sick leave transfers to time earned at the end. But employees have to weigh that out. And I don't think we should weigh it out for them. I think they should weigh out their own decision. And if this is considered at our next meeting, of course, leave share would kick in. You know, there's a lot of individuals who, when a request goes out, will donate sick leave, and they are aware of what they're doing as well. That's what I go back to, saying that we need the professional staff to know what they're doing and how to do it.
Now, we're under Section C, General Business for Information, and Rules of Procedure on Pages... pages eleven through twenty, and there again, it's Michael Carter.
We've talked about these rules of procedure and code of ethics, I don't know, at least five or six months now. And the last time that we talked about them, if you look at the deals with the agenda, which is on page fifteen, we had a conversation about work sessions, and how work sessions were not identified under preparation of the agenda. It is identified on page fourteen, which is your regular and special meetings portion. But under the agenda, we did not have work sessions included for that paragraph. So I went in and I added work session to that paragraph to clarify that when we do have a work session, there will be an agenda. If there is a packet, it will be put together and placed out accordingly, and hopefully clear that up. But in my notes, that is the only section that was remaining for the consideration of the rules of procedure. I would like to mention one thing on page sixteen. If you go to page sixteen, under A, you will see public comments. And I know that this has been talked about a few times, but the first bullet point says fifteen minutes allotted in total. If you go on down, it talks about the people that wish to speak and how many minutes they have accordingly. I think there's a, I think there's something missing, I guess I'll say it, in that portion. If you are going to maintain a fifteen-minute timeframe for public comments, which is already in your agenda, in your rules, which I did not make, and you have ten people who want to sign up and speak, where does it say that they don't get their three minutes? Does not say anywhere in here that if the number of people signed up or wishing to speak exceeds that fifteen-minute block, how you would deal with that. So I'm just pointing this out because it's been brought up a few times. To me, you're either going to have to have a mechanism in place that identifies how you would deal with a larger number of speakers than what that fifteen-minute timeframe allows for, or you're going to have to have it to where it's fifteen minutes or until everyone finishes. And I know how difficult it is to tell people when they come to speak, and you've got a sign-up sheet, and there's ten people there, and you look at them and you say, "Well, we've got to do the math, and instead of three minutes each, you're going to get a minute." There needs to be something that addresses how, if you have people wishing to speak, how it gets addressed.
Hey, comments, Sean, any?
One of the tools that's available to us, if we have more people signing up than it looks like the fifteen minutes will accommodate, we can request that the board waive the rules for code of conduct at that particular incident. That would require a majority vote of the board.
Phil?
Timmy?
Other than the first couple things you said, I think it's good, the work session, to work on that. We're going to have to think about the comment things, because it is a good point.
Greg? The, you know, some, very seldom do we have anybody speak. Occasionally, there are two, or three, or three, or four. Besides this time, fifteen minutes allotted in total, I think also it would help whoever the board chair is, if when that person comes to the podium, if they're speaking for three minutes, or if they're speaking for multiple people for five minutes, that would also help the timekeeper to have the proper time up on the board. There's, sometimes there's confusion. If they've followed the protocol and have the approval of these other people, that we need to have that evidence or that verification.
This is something that goes to your point. If you look at the third bullet point under that section, anyone speaking on behalf of three or more people, limited to five minutes, and then right below it, must have no text or email from the other two parties. So that's an important, again, I didn't write that, it's in there, but that's an important piece of that as well, because when you say that you're speaking for more than three people, you have to do more than say it according to your policy. You have to have a note, text, or email from the other two or more parties.
When does that occur? When they come to the podium to speak and give the clerk the other verification, or does that occur when they sign up?
Well, we never know who's coming. You never know who's coming in, you never know what they're coming in to talk about. So just sitting here, running it through my mind, when they come to the podium and they go through, you know, they state their name, they direct all comments to the board, which I think that's important, we've seen it before, or one has been singled out, that's not supposed to happen. This right here says, "Direct all comments to the board," not an individual board member. That's important. "Seal and remain quiet in the audience." So sometime, right after they state their name in the record, there either should be a question from the chairman, "Are you speaking on behalf of you?" Or, "Are you speaking on behalf of more than three?" The individual says, "I'm speaking on behalf of more than three," according to your rules, there has to be a note, text, or email from those other parties allowing such to occur. And if they have that, and certainly we can collect those and have it for the record. But if they do not, it goes unfortunately, they're only going to have three minutes to speak because they haven't provided the proof that you require to speak on behalf of more.
And one thing, I just want to be sure that we don't make this too complicated. I think the general public has a right to speak. They just need to follow a good procedure, and I think it's up to us to have a good procedure. But if there's a hundred people out there that want to speak, then to me, we've got to sit here and listen to a hundred people, whether it's three minutes, or one and a half minutes, whatever, ever how long they want to speak. I don't want to stifle anybody from speaking.
I don't either. That's why I bring this up, because somewhere in time, this section was written, but it wasn't written complete. So allow it to become complete. I think it ought to be modified and worded a little differently, and identify if what Commissioner John has said about the waiving of the rules to accommodate, then I think it ought to be written in that section right there. If there are more people than what that fifteen minute allotted, then it identifies that you do have that right. It's not just something you pulled out of the air, it's in your rules of procedure.
Any follow-up comments or questions, Sean?
Well, I believe what you're saying, that under public comments, you're recommending fifteen minutes allotted in total unless the code of, rules of procedure are waived by a majority vote of the committee?
Sample sentence.
So that would just be adding an addendum onto that sentence.
Phil, nothing? Timmy? Greg? So would the board like for Mr. Carter and Heather and H&R, April, to go back through this and present us with something in the very near future? Would that be a consensus of the board?
Yes.
Michelle, okay? Timmy?
Yes.
Greg? Okay. That's a consensus of the board, for you three to work together, whatever team you need to put together, to come back and give us what you would consider, your team would consider something that was some clarity to it. Thank you. Now, we're still, hey, that rules, code of ethics, that finishes you up.
The code of ethics, yeah.
Twenty-six through thirty-one.
These are, these are, I know this board has talked about disciplinary, or censor, or whatever the appropriate word is that has been discussed. Yeah, I just put together two options. The first one actually is what Heather had put together. And I don't know that there was much traction at the time to carry that through. The second one is just an alternative to the first, which, you know, I'm just trying to give you options, and I trust that everyone has had an opportunity to read over both of those. If one of them, or a portion of one of them, it's right through your consideration, we can certainly either use it or modify it. But again, we're just trying to get these policies and codes taken care of so we can move forward.
Paul, comments?
Well, I've looked at both, and frankly, I would prefer to see a kind of a hybrid in that there's things that I like in both. However, I feel that it would be necessary that we determine whether a formal board hearing is required. That would involve an investigation. So in that regard, step one, in the second proposal on page thirty, I think that should be incorporated in A. But it meets what my largest concern is, that the member be allowed to address the allegation and would also be allowed representation. So in my mind, we need a process where it is determined that the allegation is valid, and they determine whether it reaches the level where it should come before the full committee. If it is determined that it comes in front of the full committee, then the process should be followed. Now, whether we incorporate step one on page thirty with the first, I believe that would provide that process. But I don't want a small allegation tying up the board. There is a process, if we have a process where, let's say, the county attorney investigates, determine that there was a violation of the code of ethics, she makes a determination that it was minor, does not require the full board, then the chair would be allowed to take action with that particular member. That would save us from having to meet for minor allegations, in my opinion. That's all I have, sir.
Phil?
I don't have a problem with that, but who decides what's major and what's minor? What do other counties do?
Nothing.
Everything?
It's all over the board. So there's not one set procedure. The change for adding some of this language happened in 2010. And since then, I'd say very little has changed. Now, each county or municipality makes their own decisions on what they want to do. And the model rules do include that censure process, but most counties and municipalities have not adopted that. So it's kind of, you know, your own individual board makes the determination of whether they'd like to have that additional part of the model rule included or not. And most are not including it. But then, as we talked about the last time, there is no other real procedure, statutorily or otherwise, to be able to handle anything other than this censure. That's it. There is no other process. There's a really rare court process, I think that's happened once, maybe, you know, to be able to handle some in propriety, unless it's criminal action, and then the DA's office gets involved. But otherwise, this is all we have.
Any comments, questions?
I like the second option better. I'm sure there's probably some more tweaking. It's probably not perfect, but this is a lot further than what we had a year ago. So I think we're headed in the right direction.
Greg, comments?
So what you're trying to say, Heather, this ain't worth a paper to throw down. I mean, censure somebody, that's it.
Well, because all it is, is just a vote by the board, and that's it. It's not, there's not a statute for anything. The only, the only extra step after this is basically if it was a criminal action. I mean, then the DA gets involved, but otherwise, it's just the board being involved. And I think the last time that we did have a work session on this and talked about it, it's, how much time does the board want to take? And how much process do they want to go through and do an investigation, and then hearings? And, you know, it's like a trial, basically, in going through this. And nobody really felt the need for that. So, you know, I don't really know what to recommend, because, you know, how far do you want to go? And I just don't know, because there's no statute on this. It would be very helpful if there was a statute that could then be used, instead of just making up a process out of some model rules that were passed in 2010 by the legislature.
Mr. Carter? Any comments?
Let's move on.
One of the things that we are faced with on this, and this is, I won't drag it out, but in New Hanover County, what the court in that regard said, that there has to be a process. And this was a commissioner that was charged with DUI. Subsequently, he was found guilty. And the county commissioners, New Hanover County, did not hold a process. They kicked him off the board. He sued the board, and the court agreed with him that there has to be a process where you go through and you investigate to determine, and then the member has a right to defend himself. The big thing about that at the New Hanover, from what I can gather out of the school of government paper that I have, he was not given the option. He was not given the option to defend himself. Never given that opportunity. They met, voted him off the board, bam, that was it. He sued, and the judge said, "Nope, he needed to have the ability to defend himself." So I'm not saying that we will ever get to that point, but that possibility is out there. Now, the other thing that comes, if... Now, the other thing that comes, if a member, let's say that we take action against a member, we go by Robert's Rules of Order. Chapter sixty-two of Robert's Rules of Order is basically tells us how we discipline a member. And it's a court process. It follows a court process right on down there. There's always possibilities. It will never be perfect. You can try, but I don't know if we'll get there.
I just need some direction in knowing, you know, which, which way do you want to go? Maybe, maybe just emailing, uh, maybe Michael and me and saying, I like this part out of, out of it, I don't like this part, and then giving comments so that another revised version can be presented. And then maybe we can hash out, you know, finer details of, of what you want to see in, in passing an additional procedure.
Michelle?
Yeah, from what John is saying, the reason that the lawsuit occurred was because there was no process in place. I think in order to protect the county from a lawsuit, we need to put some type of process in place. But again, it's so subjective. It sounds like we do need a process.
Uh, Michelle, I mean, Heather's made a suggestion for the, each commissioner to send to Michael or to Heather their concerns about, uh, possible additions, subtractions, anything in this, in this policy. And for, for them to work out another, uh, draft copy to be presented to the board in the near future. Is, is that a consensus of the board to proceed that way?
Yes.
Timmy, Greg. Michael?
I just include that, that when you do submit your emails to, to Heather and I, I would suggest just copying the whole board because that way, if you, two of you have the same idea, it doesn't, it doesn't duplicate. We're not conducting business. I don't, I don't want us to get into an email debate just submitting your thoughts to the group, I think would be helpful.
Just need to correspond with you, Greg. If that's agreeable, that's what the consensus was, then we'll proceed along those lines. Greg, okay? Okay. Mr. Carter, is that finish you?
I hope so, Mr. Chair.
Uh, next, uh, item three, April Ham, OSHA, update.
We just wanted to provide an update. We did have a, a couple of visits from some gentlemen from the Department of Labor, pulling some paperwork back to twenty twenty, twenty twenty-one, and twenty twenty-two. After a few phone calls and some emails and some clarification of policies and things, um, there's going to be no citation issued, so there'll be no penalty or anything. Um, did provide some guidance on one policy that needs to be updated, so Daniel Roten's actually going to be working on that for us and, um, all is good. Just wanted to provide you with an update.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Any comments or questions? Okay. That will conclude section C for general business information. Proceed to D. These act, these items are for action, one, two, and three. And Daniel, you're up first.
Um, this was presented to you last meeting. Um, this is, uh, we need a vote on, um, changing these two road names. Um, try not to totally mess them up. For Aya and for Aaron Way.
The, the book, we had public comments this last meeting.
Yeah, there was no objections.
Uh, so we need a motion in a second to approve.
Motion to approve petition number one, Mr. Chair.
Second.
A motion in a second. But any questions? All those in favor, motion number one, please raise your hand. That's a five oh vote. Thank you. Next.
Motion to approve the petition number two.
Second.
Second. Any discussion? All those in favor, please raise your hand. Motion carries five oh. Thank you. Uh, does that conclude you, Daniel?
That's it. Thank you, Mr. Chair.
Moving on to section two, Daniel Roten. Portable radio grant.
Morning.
Morning.
Morning. I think at your last board meeting, Michael kind of took stead for me and mentioned the grant that, you know, we've applied for or been offered by the North Carolina nine-one-one Board to purchase a couple of handheld radios. Um, you know, the purpose of those radios is to have a backup in case we have to flee the building for something. So those radios are to be only used by dispatch. Um, that would be a hundred percent paid for by the nine-one-one Board and I will be, and I'm not just going to go out and do it now. It'd be included in the budget for next year to make, you know, life a little simpler for everybody. So, um, barring any questions, I would ask for your approval of that.
Mr. Carter, do you have any comments? You've heard Mr. Roten's presentation. Uh, we need a motion in a second.
I'll make a motion to you.
Second. A motion in a second. Ready? All those in favor of, uh, the portable radio grant, please raise your hand. Any opposed likewise? Motion carries five oh. Thank you, Daniel.
Thank you.
Item number three, uh, EBV Kitchen Construction Line Item Transfer, April.
Just have one line item transfer this morning to consider, uh, just to cover a couple of the construction, uh, bills that have come in with the new kitchen. David actually has some excess funds in one of his capital purchase lines where he saved some money on a couple of purchases. That was budgeted for this year. And we have gotten, to this point, all used equipment, so we have, we have saved money on equipment to this point also. So we just need to cover those couple of bills and I'm asking for an eleven thousand dollar transfer to cover those.
Any questions? Any comments? If not, I need a motion in a second to approve.
Motion to approve the EBV Kitchen Construction Line Item Transfer.
Second.
A motion in a second. Any discussion? All those in favor, please raise your hand. Any opposed? Motion carries five oh. Thank you.
Thank you.
Uh, moving right along, uh, county manager comments? And go ahead, Mr. Carter.
First one, addition to social work recognized in March, I just wanted to mention that it is also Brain Injury Awareness Month. And this one kind of touches, touches me pretty close. Um, as most of you are aware, I have, uh, I've been fortunate enough, I guess I could say that, to have two TBIs. And Awareness Month is basically to, to make people aware of, you know, how those things can occur, either through fall or traumatic head injury or sudden impact. Have you? This on there, say to all, all my TBI brothers and sisters out there that we recognize you. Second is, again, recognize the excellent team that we've put together here at the county, the professionalism that they demonstrate each and every day. I think, I've said this to them several times, but we now are the bar. We, we work towards setting the bar, we are now the bar for any other locality to look at and model themselves after. And I'm very proud of that fact, that that's happened in the last four years. Couple smaller things, April's financial report earlier. Um, what, what can you say negative about that? That, that report has clearly demonstrated the county has a, has established and maintained a good fiscal standing. It demonstrates that what may have occurred in the past to get us into the desperate situation of either wasteful or excessive spending, I think that now, when you look at your financial report, I would challenge anybody to say that we're doing that because we have maintained, uh, not only achieved, but maintained that status. So I think her report each month is something really to, to be proud of. Uh, last thing, I, I've got a couple other things, but I'm, I'm gonna hold off on them. What I'd like to do, and, and I, after reading the section for public comment time to address, you know, the board as a whole and not a, not an individuals, I would encourage each of you to come to one of our department head meetings or come to one of our meetings that we have, uh, for strategies or how we work things out. Look at how we as a team operate. We, we are respectful to each other. We appreciate the comments. If someone has a better idea, we don't, we don't credit work as a team. And I don't know how it was in the past, I've been told, everybody gets told something about somebody all the time. But I'm very proud of the group we got. And I would ask the board to come to some of those, those sessions and also to, to look at how those sessions are conducted and the respect that's given to each member in those sessions, how that equally amongst yourselves. I think if you did that, I think you certainly find each other's comments, each other's thoughts, although they may be different from time to time, I think you really find common ground, looking at some of these demonstrations that we have in our everyday work. So I encourage you, we'll send you notices when we're doing those things if you'd like. I would encourage you, you know, to do at least a silent member, if three or more of you come, we can't let you talk, we can only let a couple of you, but I would encourage that. That's what I'll end with today.
Thank you. Uh, let's see, let's start with Timmy today for commissioner comments.
Not on me, huh? Um, I just, I'd like to add to what Michael said and I, it brings me back to a, uh, a little, sort of a quick meeting we had to do with the Board of Education or not the Board of Education, but with, uh, Missy and Sid. And it was just something that popped up and we all went in and sit down and Michael's a part of it. And again, it goes back to that, like you, each, each person, um, you, you, okay, we, we've, we have determined there's, there's a problem. Okay, then you've got everybody's ideas and their thoughts. Um, and it's, you know, a lot of people have respectful, uh, ways that they, um, problem solving, uh, ways. And they may have ideas and you put them all together and you pick out all the good ones. And you have those kind of meetings and you figure out a way to get through that. And, uh, it's exactly what Michael's talking about from head departments. And you go from that and when you walk out of those meetings, you actually feel, you feel like you've really made a difference and it's very productive. And I understand exactly where he's coming from and that's, because that's been basically a good part of my business life. That's about all of, a lot of that's been done in customers and with customers and customers sometimes not happy, sometimes people really happy, and it goes both ways. And, but at the bottom line, when you get at the end of the, and your product is good and it's great, it's good advertisement and stuff, but I've got a lot of experience with that. But the, I, probably the only other thing is, I just, one of the, probably one of the more favorite times that I, it's always been a favorite time is springtime to me. And, uh, new life, new flowers, new trees, you know, new growth. It's always like a refreshing, I've always looked at it as, um, a very positive time of year because you, new life is coming back. And I look forward to many things that's going to be happening in the county, whether it's over the fairgrounds, whether it's, um, a couple of things we got going on. I know we're about to get started on the courthouse, uh, freshening it up, doing some remodeling there, uh, just some things that David talked about. Possibly, you know, making the front of the jail looking good. Uh, just a lot of really positive things that I'm excited about seeing. And, um, it's that time of year and I look forward to that, so.
Thank you. Michelle?
Um, I just want to remind everybody about Saturday, May fourth, the Apple Pie Festival. Um, we've been meeting a lot, the Fairgrounds Committee has, going to make this a really big, successful event. And I promise you, there's going to be more pies there than you could ever want to eat this year. So I think one vendor's bringing something like, it's just one vendor. Um, again, if you see one of these social workers out in public, tell them thank you because that does mean a lot. They really are unsung heroes. And I would ask that you pray for our town and county. You know, God's in the prayer answering business and he has certainly honored and answered my prayers. That's it.
Thank you. Greg?
Bobby?
Comments? Tom?
Uh, thank you, Mr. Chair. One of the things I'd like to point out, since it is the Social Services Month, we talk, especially in this budget season, a lot about money. But what you do not realize that whenever we started talking about the Department of Social Services, a lot of that money comes from federal and state government. Their budget is actually fifty percent greater than the county budget. We're talking about a budget in excess of thirty million dollars and we have a county budget of approximately twenty right now. Looking over our strategic plan for twenty twenty-four, in twenty twenty census, seventeen point eight percent of Allegheny County live below the poverty line. That is the constituents of the Department of Social Services. That's a lot of families. That is a lot of children and families living below the poverty line. It's represented whenever you start looking at the food closet. Tremendous amount of people will show up. I, uh, we found out yesterday that Second Harvest made a special run to bring food into Allegheny County last week. Fifty-six tons of food. That's a lot of food to give out and it'd be gone. Not only that, whenever you look at forty seven, uh, excuse me, forty-five point three percent of the population of Allegheny County is between forty-five and seventy-four, according to twenty twenty census. That's a lot of elderly people living on fixed income. And there's a lot of elderly people that will fold, show up at the food closet. Bringing in to that, I recently got a surprise. And it made me sit down and realize that, uh, we need to start thinking about our property re-. reevaluations. A little piece of, a piece of paper and reading through it, it told me that the value of my home is substantially higher than it was whenever I purchased it. Speaking with the county manager, he got a surprise with his tax bill. His property values, I believe you said, had gone up 42%? Mine had gone up 55%. That means I'm going to have one heck of a daggone surprise whenever we reevaluate in a few years our property, property values. Now, right now, we're reevaluating at eight years or six?
Six years.
Six years. Well, if we wait six years with the inflation that we have had here recently, there's property values out there that doubled. That's going to be quite a burden, burden on the population of Allegheny County whenever we suddenly give them that very large tax bill. I think we need to sit back and possibly schedule a work session where we may want to do our reevaluations a little bit quicker, especially whenever we're in an inflationary period. That really comes home whenever you look at almost, well, 45.3% is above the age of 45 to 70. Those fixed income people, you know, it's amazing thing, whenever I see on TV that the inflation rate is 13% and my social security goes up 5.5%, that's an 8% gap. It hurts. It's got to come somewhere. And if I'm paying that property tax, it's got to be paid or, you know, here we go. So I think it's something that in the future, we really need to sit down and contemplate, not saying that we need to do it, but we need to look at it, especially if the inflation rate continues to go higher. Kudos to the Department of Social Services for what they do. Bobby touched on it. 44 children. Last, and I checked, I believe it was Tuesday, whenever we had the RTAC meeting, I asked a young lady, I said, "How many children do we have in foster care?" 44. We now have six families that have been recruited and have been certified as foster families. That is great, but there's 44 children that are spread from Tennessee to North and South Carolina, all over, that these ladies have got to go and they have got to visit by government regulation once a month. That's a lot of time on the road. That's a lot of children that have, that are in the system. And it grows whenever the sheriff serves warrants. They put people on standby because they know that they're going to end up with children in social services. It's sad, but it's a fact of life. The drug problem in Allegheny County, people can hide their head in the sand, but we've, we've definitely got a real problem. David, no, Parks and Rec. What people don't realize is Parks and Rec goes down, I believe it's three times a week now, picking up the needles in Veterans Park. We had an incident two years ago, two, where people went into the bathroom at Kraus Park and they were individuals in there shooting up heroin. We had homeless guy under the, under the stage at Kraus Park. Weather's beginning to warm up, we're going to see our transits coming through. Those of us that don't get out very much, and I'm one of them, we don't see it that much. But if you look, it's there and Department of Social Services is directly involved. My hat's off to those ladies, it's kind of like law enforcement. They don't see the happy, they always see the worst. Thank you, Mr. Chair.
Thank you. One thing with always going last, most, most of my stuff's already been talked about, but I'll, I'll go through this sort of quickly. First off, it was DSS. And it's just not the young people that DSS has as clients, it's also older people, the wards of the court. And that's an important part for DSS. And I don't think a lot of people realize that how many older people that they deal with, but that's, that's a challenge in itself. And the amount of travel that DSS does and just the vehicles that they have to have. And you need to start looking at vehicles. You need to look at tires, gas, oil. It takes all of those things to make their job as easy as we can. We don't want them out on the road hauling some young person or some elderly person and that car break down. They've got to have a decent vehicle to travel in and that's something that the Budget Committee is, is tackling. We've got requests for pushing $3 million more than the county has in money. Somebody's not going to be happy at the end of the day. But you only have so many dollars to spend and you've got so many people asking for increase, it's, it's just not going to happen across the board. Then talk about our closed sessions that the commissioners have. I would challenge anybody to find a county that has fewer closed sessions than Allegheny County does. Unfortunately, I don't know that we have five or six a year. Maybe it's, I've never counted. Maybe it's that number, maybe it's a little more. Most of the time, it's talking about contracts, personnel, and they don't last very long. Like I said last time at our commissioners' meeting, I like to look at the positive things that are happening. I'm hoping this week, probably by the end of the month, we'll hear from DPI about the additional $12 million for the high school, the construction and renovation. I just pray and hope we get that 12 million. This will have our high school really into the next 50, 60 years as a viable building. I'm just anxious to get that email. I look at the fairgrounds, what Michelle's mentioned, the apple pie, fried apple pie contest that's coming up. And that's just one of the many things that the fairgrounds has planned for this year. With the renovations to the black building, that's going to open up the winter time for more events to be held. We're going to have the heating worked out. Here in the next few months, I'd like to come up with some plan about the, the large, four large doors at the black building to see if something can be done, either replacing or fixing those where we don't have the cold weather blowing in all the time. Big thing right now is, I think our estimates have been presented to Senator Heiss and Senator, and Representative Pickett on three different projects for the county. One being the fairgrounds, one being Parks and Recreation with the swimming pool and the softball, baseball field addition. And then one program that's going to have to be done one way or the other is a transfer Operates six days out of the week and everybody that goes over there, usually you're standing in line two or three deep or even deeper for people getting rid of trash, whether it be household, whether it be commercial, or whether it be trees and stumps. But that facility will have to be fixed, either through some county help or hopefully through some state help. With that being said, Heather, do you have any comments?
Actually, I would like to say, I work closely with DSS in regards to elderly or disabled people who need guardians. And I am appointed as guardian of the estate, which is handling funds for those people who have been declared incompetent. And I work closely with DSS because they maintain the guardianship of the individuals. So I'm handling money and they're handling the individuals since they're not authorized to handle money. And there are some very difficult cases that we have to handle. It's never an easy situation because of the individual that needs the care. And DSS has to make a lot of really difficult decisions. Sometimes I do, but we do those jointly and it's, it's not easy. And that is something that I appreciate their, their help and the involvement because I usually don't have to worry unless there are issues where it's beyond our control, where there's something that is not provided by the state or federal government. And then we end up putting together some kind of plan to help the individuals who we're representing. And sometimes it's not perfect, but you know, they, they do a fantastic job with the people that they're guardians for, in addition to all the other services that they provide to this community, and I appreciate that.
Thank you. Danielle, any comments? Yes, I am.
Just thanks to our DSS staff. We appreciate all of them.
With that being said, I will close this meeting at this moment. Thank you all.
Thank you.
Don't leave it. Send that for me for, that's for the DSS stuff. Yeah. Frame that and get that to you.